6:30 PM and I call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly council meeting of the City of Cumbie. It's Monday, April 10th at 6:30. If we could stand up a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would anybody else like a turn to say invocation before I ask Terry politely? No takers, Terry?
Yes ma'am. Well Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to meet together for the good of our community. Father, I pray tonight that every decision we make, every conversation we have, we will be unified again, Lord, as we meet together for the good of this community. So Father, bless our time together in Jesus' name, amen.
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 We do have a full quorum. We have Ally, Wayne, Ms. Duckworth, and Catherine, and Pastor Terry. Any presentation by citizens? There are none, so we will move forward.
City Council comments?
Yep. Okay, a couple that I will start with. We hired a new court clerk assistant. If any of you guys haven't met her, her name is Tiaja. She builds by TT, so we got TT and Ty Ty, and they're both awesome. Just T? She didn't tell me, just T. T and Ty, okay. Do you want to address the overtime payout? So I don't misexplain it?
I'd be happy to do that. We were, in an audit, we went back and reviewed how the PD was being paid overtime. And because of how internal memo was written to, from a then-current city attorney, the city was doing it improperly. And so they switched to a bi-weekly payroll. And so when we went back and reconfigured it, we had paid out, it was a minimal amount to each officer, those who are currently with us, and the officers who have been longer with us that we've sent checks to. Again, it's very minimal, but it was due to miscommunication and information that was conveyed on how to configure overtime, which should be at 86 hours every two weeks versus 171 or 3, which is a monthly average, not a bi-weekly average. So that has been corrected.
And these things are set by Tico, right? How we do, how officers get, earn overtime?
No, that's the...
I know it's different than how regular wages in overtime is set.
So that has been corrected and everybody's been paid out and everybody should be doing.
Do you want me to address this now during council comments, this cleaning bid?
I want you to think about it and see what we want to do on that. I can bring it up if you all wouldn't mind bringing it up maybe in the next meeting. But I sure would like, we have a full PD staff, wouldn't bring it up?
We had agreed six months ago to review like cost and funding. And it's for like housekeeping for the whole building, right? Is what this is for? So we have a bid for housekeeping. If you guys wanted to peek at that, it's minimal cost to have somebody come in and deep.
Twice a month, that's pretty reasonable.
I've asked him for an update, that was in August of '22, so I've asked him for an update to what '23 would be.
Now is this, is this a...
Their bond?
I'd like to bet on to allow them out.
And the court. Yeah, PD and court as well. They came up and did a survey. They came up and reviewed. But it's been that long ago, but you all probably saw. But I sure would like, we now have a full PD staff at five people. We now have court as a full staff, two people. So we've gained, one, two, three, four. We've gained about five staff since we reviewed that to go into '23 budget. Yeah, it's a lot.
A lot more dirt and stuff being tracked in, a lot of everything, yeah.
So I would like to see if you all would approve us going forward and looking at that.
We also wanted to, I know we've tossed around the idea of floaters to cross train, but I think at this point, we brought Tiaja in and interviewed her, and I think it's best that she stays in the court and just works with Ty. And we go ahead and find somebody to start training for BJ, if you guys are on board with.
I don't think so, I think we're going to keep BJ for a while.
I told her she could never go.
I need her on the committee, on the plan.
But if she had a floater, she'd have more time to be on a committee with you.
I know.
Ms. Duckworth said bring her now, so she can have tea time with BJ.
Why does it have to be a floater?
She wouldn't be a floater. That's, we brought, we were going to originally, but now that we have the assistant in there with Ty, the new hire would strictly be to train in BJ's place.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's the plan, right?
Yeah.
And City Hall, because you also have a, you also have a utility clerk that would like to go on vacation occasionally. So it'd be a cross train in the city offices, which would be water, sewer, plus it's huge financial. We must find somebody that can do accounting and financial, and that's in both positions.
I brought a lady in and talked to her, and she immediately said, no, thank you. She was honest that she was very much intimidated by finances and it wasn't her cup of tea. And said, thanks for having me, and left.
Well, we need, we need her in there, she's numbers.
She's an elected official, she can't be the employee.
I'm great with numbers, but I can't do it either.
Where did my train of thought just go?
Is this appropriate time for me to say?
So you're gonna give a thank you to...
My train of thought came back. It will avoid for the last, what, four city secretaries? We just had somebody abandon ship and leave, and we had to search. So we're trying to eliminate that now. So somebody will not just get thrown in headfirst, they will know the system and take over. But now, yes, go ahead with.
I'd like to thank Councilman Mowgli for his efforts to restore the park, repair the brick pedestals. And also, he's in the process of installing one of the lamp posts. He got a donation of wood from an associate of his that is absolutely gorgeous. And we intend to erect a sign that says Black Jack Grove Park before Black Jack Grove Day, day 13. And Ms. Finn, thank you very much for volunteering the finishing and lettering of that. Flynn, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. That's it, I just wanted to express my things also to the mayor for getting the brick. Thank you very much.
Hey, Joe needed a favor.
Well, it was, it was a special brick, you know what I'm saying?
I didn't know I could have got all of them.
Yes.
That was, that was the agreement.
I wouldn't got 30 brick, that's all I got. I got 30 brick and I put 30 brick in.
He said whatever we need, whatever we need to finish out the park, right?
Well, no, I don't think we need anymore, I really don't. If we do, if, if he's still up, we can go get it, it's no problem. It's very accessible, I mean. I love it.
Uh, just as a...
What do you think of that?
As a courtesy. Can I take a picture of that?
Yeah, it's just a rough hand drawing. And the finished product is going to be much more beautiful.
Okay. So I can give that, give him a picture of it?
Pastor Terry's in on their lights, I could sketch that better.
What we really need is donations to fix the brick planters. We need a brick mason or somebody that's very good with brick work to repair it, actually to rebuild the outer wall of that, because the sidewall is moved and pulled the whole thing apart.
Do you want to replace that wall or just eliminate that wall and put a bitch or something?
Well...
Because right now, it's a planter right now.
The aesthetics.
I think it's full of fire ants.
I have no great love for it, except that it's beautiful antique brick. You cannot buy that anymore. And when they put it up, they did a really good job as far as the artistic, artistic structure of it. But it has deteriorated from age and...
Can we throw around the idea of maybe replacing it and maintaining the brick to repurpose it in some form or fashion?
Yeah, either that or take out the planter and just use the brick, you know, like a solid bench or something.
Like a wall?
Yeah.
Barrier?
Alderman Mowgli came up with an idea to put brick, I may not, concrete pavers across the top and make bench out of it. Because people sit on it anyway.
You know, it's got, it's got three layers of brick, back, middle, and then the front. And you can take this off and literally take pavers. You can get pavers, one foot, 18 inches, two foot, whatever you need. And they're pretty cheap. And you can put those on there, and people, they're going to sit on it anyway. They're going to sit on all of it.
But he was telling me that I've walked across it, so...
Well, yeah.
And when you do right now, it's very unstable. So when I'm up hanging Christmas lights and stuff on the lamp posts, it's all over the place.
The right end of it, as you look at it, is cracked and it is unstable.
But if we do that, if we do the one on the east end, we need to do the one on the west end also.
Yeah, they got a match.
Because, and you would need to make them pretty close to the same height, so they look aesthetically right, you know.
Do we have a cost as to what it's going to be to repair that you're trying to raise?
Yes, if we rebuild the wall, the top price I've gotten so far is $10,000.
Just to rebuild that wall?
You have to take it completely apart, power wash it, clean the old mortar off of it, and put new mortar in. And it's labor intensive.
It's very particular because you got the antique bricks in there, you can't find them anymore. So they have to very carefully chisel the bricks out of there.
Could you do a GoFundMe or something?
That's a good idea, I don't know how to do that, but that would be an excellent idea.
GoFundMe takes money from it, so we would have to find a different way to do it. GoFundMe takes...
I'm not sure the city could take money on a GoFundMe page, could they?
Well, GoFundMe...
GoFundMe itself takes money out.
Takes a huge portion of it.
Ahah, ahah.
So we'd rather do like a jar, fundraiser jar.
Maybe donors choose?
Yes, that's what the school uses, right?
So you say that it is donors?
Donors choose?
I didn't understand that one.
Donors choose is kind of like GoFundMe, but it's for people to give donations to certain causes.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there something you can do at Black Jack Grove to...
Oh yeah, I was thinking like, one year, they did Kiss the Pig when Scotty was chief, and they had jars set up on two different tables. And you had to donate if it was going to be Scotty or Kathy Carter. And at the end of the day, they counted the money in both jars, and whoever's jar had the most money had to go kiss the big old muddy pig in front of everybody. And Scotty, Scotty had to kiss the pig, so... But it ra, I don't know what they, what they were fundraising for, but everybody loved it, they thought it was hilarious. So, maybe do like a kissing booth or something, go stick painter out there in a kissing booth and...
I still like the calendar. Yeah, I like the calendar, but at least a heart came in with cash and said, where do I sign up for the first two calls?
Hugs from Ace, you pay a dollar and take a picture with Ace? I mean, come on. Okay, one more courtesy I want to put out is this weekend, the sewer line by the school on Donaldton, in front of C McMullin's house, if you guys know where that's at, it's Kathy Carter's old house. Uh, there is literally a tree growing under the road that has separated the sewer pipe by like four foot.
Oh man.
So we are going to be tearing that road up entirely.
This weekend?
Yeah, we're going to try to like Friday evening to Sunday evening and get it knocked out so we can repave the road and have it ready Monday morning, so we don't mess with school too much.
How would you repair it?
We've got a decent sized stack of cold mix still. We may, I may see about renting a small like roller or something, so he can at least pack it in smoothly and prettily, so it's not him using the backhoe bucket to just kind of smash it in.
No, because it's right in front of school, so you get a whole lot of traffic.
It's already really rough right there.
So if we could plan on the repair and look at the budget to do that, that's probably going to be a great idea. Otherwise you're going to tear up wherever you put it.
Here's the rest of my notes in the agenda. Spring cleanup days, that's why we chose this weekend, because last weekend was April. This weekend we'll do the sewer line, and the following two weekends are going to be spring cleanup. The dumpster's right here, and then the third weekend is Black Jack Grove Day at the park. City budget, what do we need to discuss for workshops, getting them public?
We need to start looking at calendars. You all need to start looking at your calendars. It's April, we'll start holding budget workshops in June. So before everybody starts getting really piled on for summer, we're going to need one, at minimum one meeting outside of general regular council meeting in June to do a workshop for a budget.
These are regulated meetings, we have to have public hearings and workshops, where typically BJ would present us what budgets look like, what the ideas are, and we would take them home, make notes, whatever questions, anything we have, we come back to the next meeting. And they call them budget workshops. And they are required.
If you'll start looking at your June calendars, and if you'd know now, that would be awesome, or kind of prepare at minimum in the next meeting where you made...
Previous years, previous years, everybody waited till the last second because we just didn't know any better, and we end up half and half, meeting after meeting after meeting, and it was just chaos.
Is the city doing anything for Black Jack Grove? I didn't raise any money. I didn't know if we're doing anything at the park for during Black Jack Grove Day or...
Hey Craig, it's good to see you.
Hey Craig, hey, I see you. You know, looking at like that, who's the one? I mean, didn't, didn't we have like t-shirts made sometimes, like a year or two prior?
No, fire department has done...
I'm going to set up a canopy and car stuff in front of here.
In front of the city hall?
Just to not get the weight over there, and we're going to try to come up with some stuff to give away, but if y'all want to join in on that, that's great.
We talked about this the other day, because, oh, I have been delegated with the parade. I think I mentioned, did I mention that last time?
That's the parade for October though, right?
No, that's the parade for this.
Are you going to be the grand marshal?
I am not, they were supposed to let me know what they selected. I'm just recruiting people to be in it.
Okay.
Is it the school parade or Black Jack Daughter parade?
Black Jack Daughter parade.
It's like the big festival for you.
Right, no, I knew it was, I just didn't bring that.
It's, it's their parade, it's Black Jack Daughter's.
Last year they had a bunch of northeast, northeast there's some jeeps in it.
Can we get more people for the parade? So there's not anything that specifically the city's trying to do to raise money during the Black Jack Grove thing that we don't? Like we can't do adult tanks, stick them in?
But also can we get sponsors? They have to pay for tables instead of, like the bank and then they give out?
City does not have a 501(c)(3) and we cannot raise money.
Is their, is their fundraiser and their, their funds are supposed to be delegated for city park improvement anyway? So, I mean, you kind of just push all the money to them, they're nonprofit, and then that money's supposed to be used.
They're working on their nonprofit number, but they still haven't gotten it.
Something is suspicious about that.
I don't know if anybody on Black Jack Daughters has really researched it, but I can't say that because I don't know what all...
Well, she said that she was working with you to get the number.
Pardon me?
She said she was working with you to submit for the number.
No, no, no. Oh gosh, she was a non-farm. Daughters have to be that.
And they should have really, well, well, they should historically have.
There's no way that we can apply for grants until they get their nonprofit number.
Not for the park.
No, we can't do that, and there's a lot of money available through these grants, but, but we got to have our house.
Well, maybe she'll get it done, maybe she's not familiar with what I do. No, she probably... Okay, okay, that's very important. Well, maybe that's what she meant by she's working with you to get it, she got to pay for her stuff from here.
She, I think she was waiting to have a meeting, she being the chair of Black Jack Daughters, or president, was waiting to have a meeting with their council or their board, who could then approve because they're taking a term.
They already did that, at the, probably toward the end of March. I was there, and they approved the expenditure of the money. But that doesn't make the application automatic.
Okay, and my next question is, I feel I missed a meeting or two. Where are we with the tree thing for the park that we were talking about?
Dudley, we, he was told it has to be an organization or the city or something, and we handed over to Dudley, and this is as far as, everything goes to Dudley today.
Okay, so we don't have one set up, or we have about one coming, or okay. I have one more question, I want to see what I missed.
So can we get any dates for workshops, or do you all want to come back and make that?
I mean, if you would give me a date, I can, I'll be available, I just need to know the date.
Closer to the third week of May. Because let me finish softball season, and then my time will be freed up.
I will be gone in June.
And we're looking at June.
The second week in June, I will be in New York for a week and a half.
Business or pleasure?
If everybody could email me dates, they're not available.
Okay, I'll...
In June. And then just individually send it to Secretary, and then I'll pull together some options to send back to each of you individually.
Okay, we're looking for weekdays, right?
Weekdays, absolutely weekdays.
Because I guess we're back into travel, so that's a thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other council comments?
Yeah, June, it would probably be easy to do during the day versus at night.
I was wondering if we have a resolution to that moose dog that's running around, that black dog that the...
Father's school?
Yeah, that the resident, one of our citizens complained about. We have a resolution of that?
No, I've had other people message too about animal control, and it's just not an option.
Some of the city's spending an inordinate amount of money if you're anything going.
There's just not any options for us from county help or anything for animal control.
Okay, we have a, we have a book of feral cats also. And they are really getting bad up and down the street, all the way back into mine.
Is it possible to track that dog and take it to a pound?
If they won $150 or something, they'll surrender it?
I'll pay for it.
That's possible.
Is it a kill shelter or is it a...
It doesn't matter, the dog is of no use to the neighborhood.
It is.
There was only one non-kill that was in Wolf City.
That's kind of my delay is the kill shelter, I just really hate that. Because the dog is not aggressive, I mean, there's so many kids that love that dog so much. I'd hate to see it euthanized.
What can we do about the feral cats?
Let's finish the dog.
That's what, that's what two or three neighbors down Frisco Street say, and then we need to start tracking them. But what would we do with them once we got them?
There's a program where they trap a neuter and they release.
Back into the neighborhood?
Yes, but I'm not, I'm not sure if we have it here. I'm not sure that we've got it.
Keeps them from reproducing repeatedly.
Maybe somebody could look into funding animal rescues that would take them and not charge us the money to take them to a shelter? Because there are animal rescues.
We've reached out to numerous, and they all want money.
Well, any rescue that's not going to owe money is not going to have any room for parole.
That's right, that's right.
That, or one of them parents needs to go ahead and claim that dog and put it up, pin it or something.
I mean, I would claim it, but I already have five kids, so I...
Well, like Wesley Thompson's two kids swear that it's their dog.
Yeah, when you talk to Wesley, he's not...
Yeah, it's not his dog. Okay, if there's no more council comments, then move on to the consent agenda.
I would like to point out on consent agenda before you go much further that the negative 135 on the P&amp;L is not correct. Give me about two more days and I'll have the last account reconciled for '21, '22, and then I will send out new financials, but that is not accurate. Okay, so when we make a motion, can we pull that part out? Yes. To not approve that, yes.
Okay. This consent agenda includes the PD report, if you wanted to make a statement.
What's that?
Did you still want to make a statement about the PD report?
I would just bring notice to the influx of member of citations. We've started a new program, a new way of issuing citations that the rest of kicked off, a company that said County didn't want anything to do up there. And we've had a lot of breaks and a lot of trucks carrying the drums and moving boulders. One of the city's worst parking, basically. We already respond to calls out there. So we took that on, I covered the system where we can sack, extra that, the process and sack the trucks without waking the drivers. If everything goes as per this month this month, we're just in those citations, going to make 1.2 million for the year.
Good.
This is what was brought in from March. Okay.
We'll bring it in, I'm sorry, I think it's in there.
Only?
We'll bring it in. Because there should be some stuff that come out of that. But this, this last month has made a pretty good impact, and that was about a few weeks ago. And where it's calm, trash does continue to sit.
And that's under court?
It's, she did it. She did it, double fied it, so you had to flip backwards.
Okay, flip backwards? So, so the funds that came in, if you look under court, that's where the funds are, and those are true to correct?
The total payments brought in for citations this month was just over $86,000. If we could do that for a few more months, we could be out of debt.
It's all the time, it's not stopping.
Can I receive a primary arrest?
A day out there.
Illegal parking violations on eighteen movers, parking in roadways, parking in digges.
The companies are preparing a fact going in there.
Literally, that's why I need help.
Make it better for everybody.
There has not been a single accident out there since we started this.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, excluding the profit law statement for October '22 through March of '23.
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ally?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Ms. Duckworth?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Terry's five-four and none against. Ally, or Wayne?
I'm sorry?
She said who made the second.
I'm sorry.
And with that, it is 6:58, and we will convene into executive session. It is 7:32, and we are reconvening into open meeting. Is there any action from executive session? Hearing none, moving on. All right, old business, nine-one. Ms. Duckworth, do you want to update on any grants and potential funding? I know you need a list of things for me, I seen your request.
We haven't had any action really to report this month. We're going to make a city revitalization committee to determine which grants are best suited to us and the Arkansas-Texas Council of Governments.
At Cog?
That I went to representing our city.
I did see your email and your, your need for lists, and I will work on it.
They have promised to help Cumbie identify which grants would be best suited to our needs. So with a minimum amount of effort, we can get a big hammer to help us.
At no cost to the city.
No cost to the city, exactly.
That's the best part.
And even if we get the grant that they help us write for free, they will charge a very minimal amount to do that. So we behoove us to move out smartly on it. Start one on, whatever you want to call it.
Any other updates?
No, that's it, I think I've said enough.
Well, thank you so much for everything you do and say, I do appreciate you. I know we don't get to spend near enough time together, but...
I'm just glad I've got the time to do it.
We're both going in many directions all the time.
I know, you got your hands full, I can help anyway, well.
All right, nine, two. Do we have anything from Justin?
No, I've not heard back from him since last council meeting.
All right, let's strike nine, two, or table it for next month.
Do you want me to follow up with him, and do I need his name and?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna see him tomorrow. I will leave you his information, but I will see him tomorrow.
And if it's not appropriate for you to meet at the game, just let me know.
It'll be all right. It'll be a home game, and I'll see him. We'll have time beforehand.
Great. What's his name?
Justin Evans.
E V I N.
A N S.
Oh, he's got that chopped off street.
No.
That's the vernacular?
Mm-hmm. That's E V I N S.
I N.
There's Evans and advance. Okay. Are you still here, or did you leave?
No, I'm still here.
Okay, you can come across the street now.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
All right, back door, front door?
Uh, the side door's open. It doesn't matter. Just come in. Not stopping. And said, any action? And there was none.
I will check down about feral cats. I have a radio that my sister knows.
It looks like a page.
I don't know. I think it's a recorder.
She takes big dog, she rescues big dog. I don't know about the black dog, whether that is qualified as a big dog.
I have seen the things you're talking about, too, the catch and release sort of spamer.
I've seen those. Okay, we're on the update for ISD and HWH.
That chair is very wobbly.
Yeah.
We're hoping you can repair the cat.
I don't have a repair.
Shelley, Shelley said the update was you had called in locates for some.
Stop in. Says locates are done.
You've been communicating with Simon and everything, so.
We'll go over there, start tracking, see if we find the money.
Okay.
He says there might not be one over there, but the finance side there is.
Wednesday, this coming up Wednesday at 5:00 PM, there is a management meeting at the school with the board and contractors and stuff. She said, any and all of us are welcome to attend. They're gonna walk through, just discuss progress and where things are, so she said you're welcome to come if you want to come. Everybody can go. So I don't, we don't have any action on it.
Did I miss, I mean, what the status is? I've given you the, the public announcement information if you want to post it. And so are you gonna discuss that with Shelley on who's paying the costs for that, or?
Yes, so she said she'd love to sit down and discuss what they need to pay.
We left the last meeting with the city would approve posting a public notice for a design engineer to come back with what the cost would be to put the line in four inch or six inch from the man that that title was in place. But we don't have confirmation he's paying for the public.
In passing, when we were picking up kids today from school, she stopped me, and she said she'd love to sit down and talk about what the school needs to pay to get this all done. So they're not expecting us to just foot the whole bill for it, so that's kind of what we've been waiting for.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So again, table for next?
Yep, table for next month. No action tonight. Painter's not here, but annexation is trucking along. It is moving, it's a very long drawn-out process, but that is trucking along.
We have all the documents. We spoke a bit with our city attorney. You all had approved the funds to be spent with the city attorney for her to review the annexation documents. She's brought them all up to date. We have corrected all of them and made them specific to City of Cumbi. Painter, Officer Painter will go back to the petitioner, who is Jenkins and the other owner. And then now it's gonna be in their court for them to follow. Now it's their turn to come back to city. So the city has taken it as far as we can. It's down in their hands.
I can't open.
Talk to Jenkins or she's gonna go.
It's gonna cost them half a million dollars to do it, but they're putting in a well.
That's awesome.
Probably the best thing for the city. That way that RV lot doesn't strain our water system and bleed us dry, so if they got half a million dollars to throw on it, let them do it. Then that leaves us with the issue of... They can share water with us?
No, we can't. We can't.
Yeah, it can't touch our water. Their well water can contaminate our water. By God, it might make it a little bit better.
I disagree.
We can't. I love you. No, we're gonna, the first well should support the first thirty of forty, I believe, and then if they have to enlarge the tank, then they will enlarge the tank to support more.
That's a shame. We could do something in conjunction with them. The city could do something in conjunction.
It would, it would be a brilliant idea.
We could, but they, they don't want to wait. They don't want to wait for the testing and engineering and everything.
Well, no, I got this case of wells. It's gonna be in there, it didn't happen to you.
I mean, we've got our, we've got our request in for a ten million dollar grant.
Yeah, I don't know where we are on that list. We are on the list. We're on the priority list.
Can we contact TWBB and just see where we are?
Yes, I can. I will.
Maybe contact Jennifer and SPI and say, could be realistically...
And Joe Cohen down at the Texas Water Development Board.
And if you may say, hey, we're gonna get it in three months, or a month, or if it's two years out, we won't go forward, or?
But that would mean that the, the cost of the well, the cost of the well would definitely go up because if they were to tap, if any of the city was to tap under that well, then that city would, the city would automatically have to put a bunk and a coroner right there, so it can feed.
What about storage?
Feed both ways. Yeah.
Just a thought. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to...
You're already giving the storage deals, but the amount of storage, you know. Let's see, if they, if they grow it and supply the park, then that's all they do is they grow it. And they supply the park, and that is their water. We have nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
Just as they have nothing to do with ours, and...
Are they under TCEQ regulations? In an operation that big, are they under TCEQ?
Yeah, TCEQ will, will have to go. No, TCE, no, that's a good question.
I think it's county, is it, unless we finish the annex, until we finish the annexation, it's county, and it would fall under this ETJ paperwork packets that Andy sent over forever ago. And we'll get to that in a second.
I'm sorry, I'm shut up.
No, it's, it's another agenda item to discuss. Okay, that's only a discussion item, so moving on to the next one. Nine, five is, we talked about opening bids for cybersecurity. The good news is, if it's one vendor and it's under fifty thousand dollars for the year, we actually don't have to go out for bids. So Casey's agreement, which he was supposed to be here tonight and got called out on emergency. He forwarded it to me like five minutes before the meeting started, and it won't open. So hopefully I can go open it, but it's basically what he addressed with us at our executive session last month. And it comes up to forty-five thousand for the year, but it's broken down like this. It's nineteen thousand to the city, six thousand to court, sixteen for PD, and two thousand. And it includes equipment updates, because we talked about the new server, and they would buy that one back, because it'd make an awesome gaming system for somebody one time.
Do we have the money to pay for it?
I mean, it's, we're already paying. So it's, it's a little bit more than it was, but it's a lot more coverage. And it's a lot more improved, like we talked about, switching us guys over to...
Fit in the budget, right?
Yes.
It's ten thousand more than what we're paying right now for city, so I'd really like to see what equipment they're bringing in.
Okay, so we're gonna need you to write off on it.
Say that, and it's recorded now. JKJK. JKJK. She said go fix the spigot.
So it's ten K more for the city contract that they're recommending. It's two K more for the PD and what they're recommending. So I'd really like to see the contract and what their, what equipment they're throwing.
I didn't forward the contract.
For twelve thousand dollars, I'd like to have it be a whole lot of equipment.
She hasn't honestly been for very now yet to see it either.
Less amount of equipment than what he told me, because our server's a meter along the way. It'll all be in here.
Oh, that's cool.
We're gonna be combined on one awesome server, and the contract is now gonna be like user-specific, including all of the council. And it's gonna have, uh...
Yeah, I don't have any particulars. I mean, I just don't have any particulars on this.
Like security as far as people, he's, because aldermen and councilmen and employees come and go and come and go, so it's, it's gonna like remotely deactivate all of their access. Like when somebody walks out, all you do is say, hey, this one's gone. And it, it would like immediately log them out of every system, like across the board, everything, immediately.
As much as technology advances, how fast it advances if we don't stay a little bit up.
Some of the things he showed us in that executive session were alarming.
We have no, we have no security. We're basically...
I could tell everybody, every one of your passwords to everything, because I seen them on the screen. It was, it was frightening.
She hasn't seen it, though. She got it on tape.
So, as far as, that being said, I know I don't have the physical agreement from him, but we all sat in the meeting with Casey for a very long time while he talked. If you would like to accept his agreement at this moment, this is your opportunity, or we can table it.
Let's go.
Y'all have to make the motion.
I make a motion to accept the bid for the...
Accept the offer from bid for cybersecurity?
Services for the city of Cumbi.
Cybersecurity services.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ally, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Miss Duckworth?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Four, none against. Motion carries.
If somebody could give me the wording of what you just passed.
A motion to accept bits, offer for IT and cybersecurity. As prepared. Next item is the subdivision regulations for ETJ, those two huge massive packets that I gave you guys forever ago from Andy. He came out and talked about. At this time, we kind of need to have some action on it. I don't, I know it's a lot of reading and a lot to comprehend and understand. But there's things up and coming, like the shop next to the school. Andy has spent a lot of time over there, because he was dumping raw sewer into the ditch. He's trying to bring in RVs or tiny homes. What he's gonna do is put several of them there, because he's gonna house his employees on sites, and, yeah, and just not happy with it. So if we could get something adopted as far as these ETJs.
I read the regulations, and it seems like the city...
Short-term rental and...
Yeah, the city goes along with what the county has.
We try to, but we have not officially adopted that.
Okay, well then we make a motion to adopt it.
To adopt Hopkins County ETJ for short-term rentals and properties.
I make a motion to adopt Hopkins County, what is it?
ETJs.
ETJ.
Is provided by ETJ. Subdivisions.
I'll second it.
And it's made and seconded. Ally?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Miss Duckworth?
Catherine? Yes.
Terry? Five, four, none against. Motion carries. Do I have to hit that both times? When do I hit the gavel?
All the time.
Yes.
We like to hear that.
New business, and ten, one, we're going to strike, because it is not the ordinance that was created that, I'm sorry, I read at the last minute. It was not what I wanted. What we were trying to come up with was, and this is something he can help me touch on. People are parking in their yards, and they're running over meters and sewer lines and water lines, and they're breaking them on our side, so we have to keep going out and fixing them. And at some point, we have to have an ordinance or a violation or something, so we can start charging them or writing them a ticket for destroying the city property or something. So once I get that word and how I want to, I'm gonna bring that back to you guys. Next item is something we've been talking about, and I just kept not bringing it up to you guys. Uh, I do have a city-paid phone for people to call. Like, we don't give out my personal number, because I have... This one is provided by the city. All city business and emails and everything goes straight to here. Chief does not have a city-paid phone. BJ does not have a city-paid phone. Ty and Painter?
Painter.
Lieutenant, just...
If Jeff is not here, then we reach out to his lieutenant. Even when Jeff's off duty, we reach out to him most of the time.
I don't ever call his personal phone. I don't. When there's crazy people here.
However, if Lieutenant had also had coverage of it, would be appropriate.
I'll call his phone, too, because I have their numbers and Craig's. I don't have the other one, so I just go through the circle of who can I find, who's on duty. So the idea was obviously not to provide everybody with phones, because everybody doesn't want two phones to tote around like me, so if we do like a twenty-five dollar a month stipend to reimburse them for all the time they spend on their personal phones.
That's fire.
Try to make a little damper in their phone bills. Anybody wanna make a motion?
It's a policy. It's a policy.
Is it?
So we make a motion to accept a new policy that is not, is not really written, but...
Make a motion to approve a policy that would reverse.
Approve the policy.
Because we... It is written in the agenda item as to the amount. It'd be once a month, and who gets it? And it's labeled with titles. Chief, City Secretary, so if that changes, BJ leaves, then we have a new city. We don't have to amend the policy every time, so... I mean, it's worded properly. Well, you can so choose to table it. That is your decision.
I make a motion to accept the new phone policy to include monthly payments to reimburse the chief that will turn that through to the Attorney and Associate Judge at twenty-five hour a month.
I say.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ally?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Miss Duckworth?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Five, four, none against. Motion carries. I think I only hit it at the end. Okay, ten, three. I'm not sure that any of you were here when we heard from MVBA. Wayne might have been. Were you here when Lana brought MVBA out here to discuss new collection offers and... That was when things went totally sideways with Rita and Lana and everything else. GHS is who we use right now, along with the other systems for collections and stuff like that. We pay them an astronomical amount of money every month. And Ty was telling me she's had offers from other companies come in, and a lot of them actually are self-sufficient, and they collect their portions out of collections. So we don't have to pay them. So I told her we could bring some of them in or bring MVBA. All we need at this point is council approval to search for new collection agencies.
That's been done a long time ago.
That's right, and it made a huge to-do, and things went sideways.
We, I also, I love the, the city secretary of the city, and they have a company that they utilize that does all of their collections for them, and, and they pay out of the money they collected. They don't, they don't charge you for sending out the collection notice unless they receive anything back.
Right, right.
GHS charges for every piece of data.
I think that's like the one she was showing me that you had got the email to and sent it over to her.
Oh, that, yeah.
That one, that one was a similar one where they didn't charge us for anything. They take their portion out of the collections. That one, that one was a similar one where they didn't charge us for anything. They take their portion out of the collections.
I make a motion that we accept this.
Make a motion to approve the search for new collections.
Yes.
I say it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ally?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Ms. Duckworth?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Five, four, none against. Motion carries. And with that, it is seven fifty-five and meeting adjourned. You are free to leave.